I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The time is six o'clock. Welcome, everybody. I'd like to turn some time over to our invocation and our pledge. Our invocation will be led by Mr. Dation Williams and our pledge by Mr. Scott Moore.
Thank you, President Hubert. Please join me in a word of prayer, if you so choose. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather and conduct the business of our school district. Thank you for allowing us to serve you through our service to the students and administrators of this district. We ask that in our service that we put personal agendas aside and anything that's self-serving. Father, we thank you for your continuous protection and grace over our families and this school district and bringing us back safely from this recent spring break. We pray that you will continue to strengthen the administrators of this district and the leaders of this country and grant them wisdom in the tough decisions that they make daily, especially during this pandemic. In closing, Father, we honor you and we give you the glory for past blessings and for those to come. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to Item 2A, our awards and recognition. Item A, special district recognition of the 2022 UIL Five Boys 160-pound weight class.
All right. Well, as you can see from our agenda tonight, we had a very successful state wrestling tournament. And so we're tonight going to recognize quite a few state champions, and we're going to kind of break them down by school. So we're going to start this evening. We're recognizing our state champion from Candy Creek High School, and I will invite Dr. Jeff Stickler, our principal from Candy Creek, to start our introduction.
President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, thank you for giving me this moment to recognize our, one of our really most successful athletic programs at Candy Creek and one of our most successful students at Candy Creek. So it's a wonderful young man. I'm going to introduce Coach Heineman here in a minute, but I wanted to give you a little bit, a little story about Josh. He was our February Student of the Month, and our Students of the Month get to eat lunch with me or have to eat lunch with me one day during that month. And so he was in my office. We were eating lunch together, and we were talking about wrestling, obviously. And it was right before the district wrestling meet. And I know he had done well last year, so I was asking him, you know, are you gonna, are you planning on winning the district championship this year? How does that look? And he looked at me and said, "I'm not going to win the district championship. I'm going to win the state championship."
Wow.
And here he is, and he's, I love the confidence that he has grown into this year and grown, and the young man that he's grown into. We'll talk to you a little bit more about our program and introduce our coaches. Our athletic director has done a great job for us, Coach Kendall Heineman.
Thank you. President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll, thank you for having us here this evening. You know, when you look at all the things happening on our campus, I want to say first, thank you for the renovations that we have going on on our campus right now. You know, we'll be, we'll be ready to dive into 6A here in the next coming, next fall. So we thank you again for all of y'all's hard work on that. You know, when I, when I introduced Coach Ferguson and Josh, Dr. Stickler kind of mentioned it, the confidence that he exudes and the confidence that Coach Ferguson exudes when he walks around the hallway. You know, Coach Ferguson, he eats, sleeps, breathes, dreams wrestling. It's, you know, the NCAA tournament, he's tweeting about it, he's watching it. He kind of perfects his craft, and knowing a little bit about him, it pours into his kids. And the kids that go and wrestle for him, they basically, they're an extension of him. And you see it in the way that they talk, the way that they walk, and the way that they wrestle. You know, and for that, I'm indebted to him because he does a great job of our program. You know, he has it going, you know, on all cylinders. As far as Josh, like Dr. Stickler said, one of the more confident human beings I've ever been around. He's, you know, 17, 18 years old, and, you know, I can't help but notice that at the, you know, the final day of the state meet, he gets done with the semifinal round, his match, and he beats, beats the gentleman across from him. And he takes us, literally, the three, us three coaches, and he goes and walks over, and he wants to go watch his opponent wrestle. And so he's, at the end of this, and he may not remember this, I do. At the end of the match, when he finds out whose opponent it is, he just walks away and just whispers, "Oh, I got this." And so like, you know, that's the kind of confidence, and he got it. I mean, you look at it, he is a state champion, and you can't take that away from him. He will have that forever. Candy Creek has that forever. And, you know, that, that's something that I'll remember for the rest of my life. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Coach Ferguson.
President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll, I want to thank you guys for giving a recognition to Josh Thomas' achievement. Thank you, Kendall Heineman, for the great words. Also, if you guys see Coach Heineman's way out, his birthday is tomorrow, so. To get started on Josh, Josh came to us after his freshman year, going into his sophomore year of the summer. He had gotten, every year we hand out some summer packets of workout programs. Josh shows up on the first day, and he's, he's like, "Hey, Coach, I'm here." And I was like, "Hey, what's, what's going on?" How, you know. I hand out about 50 or 60 of these every year. And he's like, "You don't remember giving me a packet?" I was like, "Yes, I do." And, you know, that first day, he got after it. You know, he, he had a lot to work on. He kept, he kept getting after it every day, every practice. I think he maybe missed two or three practices that whole summer. A lot of that due to his, his awesome mom staying after him. You know, anytime there was a hiccup or anything like that, Gina was always there. That even, you know, when school was shut down, Josh talked his parents into him buying, them buying him a mat. Like, I think it was like an eight-by-eight, 10-by-10 mat. And he used to invite wrestlers, or he used to invite anybody over. Come over and compete, work on technique. It's something he saw online. You know, he's, is, we called it the Grangerland Regional Training Center for a little bit. You know, that was just, that was just something that he did. He was always looking to compete. You know, in the practice room, never takes reps off. He's always looking, you know, he's always asking me questions. "Coach, what should I do in this position?" "Coach, this happened to me his last time." Okay? You know, anytime, you know, he took a few losses this season, he always got better off of it. He never, he never was sorry about it. He never blamed anybody else. He always, you know, it was always on him. He always found a way to, you know, if he, if he had to wrestle that kid again, he avenged that loss. You know, some of his accomplishments, he helped lead his team to two district team titles, two years in a row. He's two-time district champ. He won the region this past year. Two-time state qualifier, and then, of course, being a state champ. And then, most important, he was very respectful to his teammates. You know, they, they would always know that, that Josh was working his tail off. They always knew that Josh was working out, you know. Even if something crazy had happened where he couldn't make it to practice, Josh got his workouts in that day. He, he was getting better some way, somehow. Like Coach was saying, he will always be our first state champ. So when we get the board put up, his name will be there in gold. Everybody will see it. Everybody will always ask about Josh Thomas for the rest of our program's history.
That's cool.
And then, the biggest thing is the culture over there. Our kids have seen a kid do it. They know that they can do it. They know that, you know, we have kids in our hallways now that know that, that this is achievable. That if they, if they get after it, they, you know, they work hard, that this can be done. So with that said, my great honor, I would like to present to you Josh Thomas to come up with you.
I had to write these down. You know, this is a proud moment for Candy Creek High School, the first ever state champion. Josh, we're real proud of you for that. We're here to recognize you not only as a student athlete, but also as one who makes a difference at the school. One who makes a difference in the classroom, makes a difference in the community. And we just want to say thank you for all you've done. We're very, very proud of you. I found a quote from a wrestler. I had to look for it for a while. Let me tell you. Not really. David Morris Taylor III was, was an American freestyle wrestler. He currently competes in the 86-kilogram class. In 2021, Taylor became the 2020 Summer Olympic Gold Medalist after defeating reigning Olympic and world champion Hassan Yastani, a feat that he repeated from his 2018 world championship performance, where he stormed his way to the title, very similar to what you did. David Taylor once said, "I take pride in my wrestling and I take pride in my academic accolades. It's a lifestyle choice, and that's what I'm trying to apply in every aspect of my life." And we know that you do the exact same thing, Josh, and we're all real proud of you. Thank you.
Congratulations. I'm in the 200-pound class right here.
Looking for you.
You know, there, there are those moments. I can remember when I first moved into the, the office here as Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools. Within that first year, I remember walking the halls of Candy Creek, because they didn't have a wrestling program yet, our only high school without a wrestling program, walked the halls with the principal, looking at the building, trying to find a place that we could put a wrestling mat, because we knew, we were having the conversation that this could be a very successful program and foundational, really, in the, not only in the athletic program, but I think in the school itself, right? When you, like, like Coach said, when you have a state champion, it breeds belief. Now, with you all moving to 6A, I think it, you know, this is a moment. And we appreciate Josh, you kind of being that foundational piece, because it's, you know, 10 years from now, when we see a steady flow of Candy Creek coming to these meetings, it's going to all kind of come back to this moment. So congratulations to the Panthers once again. I think it's wonderful. And, and speaking of that foundational moment, you know, it all starts one place. And then when greatness begins to, to really take hold, you see wonderful things blossom and happen. And as we've become now accustomed to seeing the College Park Wrestling Program come to these meetings every year, you see it build and build. And so tonight, we're going to celebrate quite a few wrestlers from College Park. And the number-one Cavalier fan of all here, Dr. Mark Merle, is going to make an introduction for us.
Thank you. I've been there a few years.
Yeah.
President Hubert, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Knoll, thank you for inviting College Park High School this evening and recognizing our state champion wrestlers. Our wrestling program has grown over the years and has become one of our premier programs at College Park and also a premier program in the area. It is my pleasure to introduce you to the coach that has created an incredible wrestling culture, our head coach and the UIL National High School Coaches Association Coach of the Year, Eric Spute.
Well, I want to, first, thank you guys for, for having us here and recognizing our three state champions and their hard work and their accomplishments this season. I know I can speak for, for all of them in that we are very blessed to be part of such an amazing school district, great school at College Park with a phenomenal administration that gives us the support it takes to be successful. We've, we have two, two girls that led our, our girls' team to a second-place team finish at the state tournament, which is the highest finish in program history. And then we have Jacob Smith, our, our boys' state champion, that led our, our boys' team to a seventh-place team finish at the state tournament. We've had a, a lot of success with our teams the last three to four years, and a lot of it can be attributed to, to these three athletes that I have behind me here and just their hard work, their leadership, their character, how they represent our programs. It's, it's been really fun to watch. Also, before I get into talking about those three individually, I'd like to thank and, and recognize my two assistant coaches. They're back here. If they want to stand up, Coach Lindsey Spute and Coach Kenneth Mark. They both do a phenomenal job with both our boys and our girls. And I wouldn't be standing, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the hard work and dedication and time that they put into our kids. So very thankful for them. Thank you, guys. First, I'd like to recognize Maddie Welch. We have, we have three state champions. I'd like to recognize Maddie Welch. Maddie's a senior, and she really has a, she really has a cool story. She didn't start wrestling until she was a sophomore in high school, which is kind of unheard of for, for a kid that's had as much success as she's had. She didn't qualify for the state tournament as a junior. And I'll never forget, she lost at the regional tournament her junior year, and she made her mind up that she wasn't going to leave College Park without being a state champ. And every day throughout the offseason, she worked her butt off. She, through the summer, worked her butt off, did the right things, lived the right lifestyle, and, and it really paid off, and she became a state champion this year as a senior. She just got back from Colorado, competing at the Women's High School National Championship, and became a national champion. So again, unheard of. Someone that started as a sophomore, it's, it's really unheard of. She has aspirations of wrestling in college, not sure where yet, but she has a lot of schools with a lot of interest based off her recent success. So we are very proud of Maddie and very excited to see what the future has in store, store for her. So Maddie Welch. Next, I'd like to recognize Jacob Smith. He was our, our boys' state champion this year. He's been a part of our program the last four years. He was one of our boys' captains this year. He's really grown into a excellent leader for our, for our team and our program, a guy that you can always count on to be doing the right things inside and outside of the wrestling room. He's had a lot of success the last four years. He's going to walk away from College Park as prob, as one of the, the most successful wrestlers to come through our program. He was on the state podium three years. He was, he was fifth as a freshman. He was fourth as a junior, and he won a state title this year as a senior. He's also going to end his high school career with 170 wins, which is most in program history, which is really, really incredible. One thing I always talk about when, when telling people about Jake is I think the thing that separates him and, and, and makes him so successful is his ultra-competitiveness and just absolute hatred of losing. And that's in anything he does. And that we, we try to play a team game once a week. And man, I don't know if I've ever seen anybody so fired up after losing a game of handball or dodgeball or something. But I mean, and, and, you know, and Jake had a lot of one-point matches this year, a lot of overtime wins against very quality, very tough opponents. And a lot of that came down to just the sheer will to win and not want to lose. And it's his competitiveness and desire to be the best is, is one of the many reasons that I have no doubt in my mind that he's going to be successful at whatever he decides to do in life. Jake is going to attend the Colorado School of Mines on a wrestling scholarship next year. He's going to major in computer science. So we are very excited to follow Jake's career at the next level. Jacob Smith. And last but not least, we have Olivia DiGiorgio. Olivia accomplished something this year that less than a handful of wrestlers in the history of Texas high school wrestling have done. She became a three-time state champion this year. She was, she was on the podium all four years of high school. She was fifth as a freshman and, and won a state title sophomore, junior, and senior year. This state championship was a little bit special. Halfway through the season, our coaching staff made the decision that we were going to bump her up a weight class to help our team out. And to win a state title at that weight class, she had to beat the defending state champ at the, at the higher weight from Allen. And it ended up being the much anticipated state finals match. It was probably the most exciting match of the, one of the, one of the most exciting matches of the entire tournament. She gave up size. She was given up a lot of strength, ended up on top. And, you know, she's, she's one of the wrestlers, you can sit back sometimes and say, "Man, how, how did she do that?" You know, when she's on, when she's wrestling really well. So she's really fun to watch. She really had to earn that, that third state title. So it definitely wasn't just given to her. She had to go up and earn it. She also competed in Colorado this past weekend at the Women's High School National Tournament, made the national finals, finished just short of becoming a national champion, lost by a point in the finals. So finished in second in the country. She's had a phenomenal year. She is going to wrestle at Texas Wesleyan University in Dallas. So very bright future for, for Olivia. We are very proud of her. And Olivia DiGiorgio.
Hey, y'all. I know it's awkward to stand up here, but if you give me just a few minutes to say a few nice things about you, is that okay? You don't really have a choice, sorry. So I'm going to let you in on a little secret. I knew very little about high school wrestling, but I knew you would be here today, and I wanted to learn some more about your achievement and the context that you achieved it in. And so for the rest of y'all that may not know some, I'll, I'll share a few, a few takeaways that I had when I, I crammed and did a little research. So the first one is, is that high school wrestling is nothing like WWE. There is no Pal Driver. And I think that hitting your opponents with a folded-up chair is discouraged. Yeah? Is that right? Sometimes. What I also learned is this sport, and this will come as no surprise to y'all or your parents, this sport is tough. Yeah. It is tough, and it requires so much of you. Not just all the physical work, day in and day out, putting your body through tough times, right? And seeing what your body can do. It also takes mental toughness, like being persistent, being resilient, being able to get up there on the mats even when things don't, aren't going your way, when the stakes are high and all the eyes are upon you. These are all skills that will help you be successful in your future, too. So for y'all to excel and be at the top of this very tough sport is just amazing and incredible. And I hope you are so proud of yourselves, because everyone in this room is proud of you. So on behalf of the board, and congratulations.
Nice to see you again.
No, no people's elbow. Yes, not jumping off the top rope. All right, Dr. Knoll, we'll, we'll keep the party going.
All right.
And keep going with our wrestlers.
Well, we're, we're going to move off, off of wrestling now. We're going to move to...
Off of wrestling, yes.
But, but one thing continues, state champions in Conroe, SD. That continues. So one of the neat things about school today, as compared with maybe when we were in school, is that there's so many opportunities for, for students to really find their passion and what they're gifted at and to, to get an opportunity to show that and celebrate it and compete. And so tonight, we're going to have this opportunity to recognize a UIL Division II Traditional Animation State Champion. And to tell us more about that will be our principal from Oak Ridge High School, Dr. A.J. LeBecky.
President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, thank you for inviting us here tonight. I'm going to introduce you to Mr. Yell and our state champion, Christina Lenz. I think if she did wrestle, she'd be pretty phenomenal at it, because everything this young lady puts her mind to, she's very successful at. Last year, she finished sixth in this competition at the state level. And when I saw her right after the results came in last year, I said, "So next year, state champion, right?" And she said, "Oh, Dr. LeBecky, I don't know if I can fit in my schedule. It's a lot of time. It's, you don't know how much time I put into this." I'm like, "Well, if anyone's going to get a state champion, it's you." So she said, "Well, we'll see what we can do." So I checked with her this year. I said, "What do you think, you going to compete?" She said, "I don't know. She's a senior. She's in the academy. She's looking at tons of colleges. She's got heavy course load." And she came back and won a state champion. I said, "Well, I'm going to take all the credit for it. It was my idea for you to have to win." But no, over Christmas break, she spent a ton of hours working on this project. Very proud of her. But I want to tell you about Mr. Yell. He's our AV teacher. He's been with us for four years. In the last two years, he's had a South by Southwest champion in animation and now a state champion in animation. So I'm going to let Mr. Yell talk a little bit more about Christina tonight.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. I had Christina in audio video production one last year. And one of the very first start-to-finish projects we do in my AV class is a public service announcement. And she turned in a 30-second stop-motion animated public service announcement for, I think it was a winter coat drive, right? For a winter coat drive locally. And I was like, "Hey, we've been competing in this animation and film competition for the last couple of years. Let's see, let's see what, let's see what she thinks," right? So we got on a Zoom call, you know, as it was last school year. And somehow I talked this audio video production one student, who had known me for one marking period, into doing a full three-minute stop-motion film. And that was the one that ended up sixth place at state last year. And I thought to myself, once I got to know her better through the school year, man, if she wants this, she can be a state champion next year. And luckily for all of us, she did. She was ready to put in the hard work again for another outside-of-class, no-grade project that was just an incredible amount of hard work and dedication. I don't know if you've ever created a stop-motion film before, but it is a long, tedious, arduous process. She took over 4,000 still images to make one three-minute film. And then she had to do all the sound after that, because when you take still photos, no sound comes with it. So from start to finish, this project was a long, tedious labor of love. And you can really show, you really see through her work that she puts a lot of her heart and love and dedication and hard work into this project. I understand you guys have had a chance to see it, so you've probably recognized that. It's, it's a great three-minute film that she worked on called Metamorphosis. But the artistry and craftsmanship was beyond belief. Blew my mind when I saw it. And I just want to say, her hard work really paid off. Sometimes it was painful, I know. Sometimes it was a lot of work. But she just did an incredible, incredible job. And I just want to say, congratulations to Christina.
All right, everyone. Well, I had the opportunity to watch Christina's production, and I will tell you, there were a couple of takeaways. One, travel the world. Two, was planting seeds and watch them grow. And three, love your mom, because that was kind of the main theme of the, of the whole presentation. And knowing that she spent so much time, and this is not actually something that she actually wants to pursue in college, but it was something that CIST offered her the opportunity to try. And as a second go-around, she herself had the opportunity to sort of metamorph. And so we are very, very proud of you, and on behalf of the board, we're very proud of you.
And on behalf of the board, we offer, we honor this, this award and we look forward to seeing what you do in the future. So, congratulations.
Very good. It is very enjoyable to recognize so many students achieving so many wonderful things out there. And I know we have one more special recognition, I'll, I'll turn the time over to you for that now.
Yeah, and I, just to echo that, you know, to have, and I think we shouldn't take for granted the fact that we have three different high schools recognized tonight, that's a big deal. We take a lot of pride in, in saying and meaning that we have excellent schools across the district and we see examples of that. And it's hard to top that, but I think we have, our next recognition is, is going to challenge that. Just one more great story. And I'm going to leave my words till the second half of this when I get my chance to speak because we want to hear from Ms. Monica Jones, who is a teacher at Oak Ridge Elementary. And she has a story to tell. She does. So, Ms. Jones, if you would.
President Hubert, Board of Trustees and Dr. Knoll, I am here to present to the board, three heroes employed by CISD. Heroes, may I ask? That's silly. But there are two kinds of heroes. There are heroes who save the day with bravery, feats of strength or achievements, and they're much loved by the media and the masses. And there are quiet heroes who do the small tasks that seem inconsequential, but they matter nonetheless to at least one. And in education, we know the importance of these quiet heroes. They are our greatest asset. Just ask any kiddo helped by a teacher to overcome learning difficulties. Any kiddo who's helped by a coach. Ask any family supported by their school, or you can ask me. I want to tell you of three such quiet heroes. On February 8th, I went to bed ill and I did not come to work at Oak Ridge Elementary the next morning. My sweet principal, Tammy Eldridge, she was worried when I did not answer her texts and calls, and I saw there were many later on. She persistently made even more calls. And one call was to Officer Wiley to come to my home to check on me. Officer Wiley found me unresponsive. She, along with Sergeant Mann, called EMS to my house. I was taken by ambulance to the hospital with sepsis and bacterial meningitis. After I regained consciousness, one of the doctors in the ICU told me, a couple of hours more and it's not likely I would have have arrived alive. This is shocking to hear, but it's wondrous at the same time. I am alive because of these sweet, quiet heroes who leapt into action. What they did that day without fanfare made a difference, maybe not to the masses, but to at least one person, one family. February 8th, 9th, 2022 could have been my last day, the last day of my life. But thankfully, life is a series of thousands of tiny miracles put into motion by quiet heroes like Tammy Eldridge, Officer Wiley, and Sergeant Mann. Their actions that day were the miracle I needed. In education, we don't get to choose whether or not we affect others. We do. My story emphasizes how important individual efforts can be. I am thankful these three educators did their jobs and did it well. I am alive because they did. Thank you.
Told you. So, this is a very special opportunity that we have to recognize those folks. And certainly, I told Monica, we're so happy to see her here today. And, you know, our educators are put in a position where they make millions of decisions every day. And, and, you know, we don't always know the impact of those and sometimes we don't even know why we made the decision that we made. Sometimes they're just, it's just gut, right? People sometimes don't come to work. But luckily, that day, Tammy Eldridge didn't take that as a, you know, wouldn't accept that because her gut told her that there should be more done and we have the right people to, to help spring into action. And, and so, I think for, for us as a school district, it shows two things, that we have great decision makers that make great decisions and we have a team of people from, be it teachers and school staff to our wonderful Conro ISD Police Department, that really are helpers, right? And there's a, there's a great quote from Fred Rogers. You remember Fred Rogers, right? Mr. Rogers? And he, he would talk about his mother. And, and he shares a story that his mother would tell him when he would watch the news and see things that scared him. And she would say to him, Fred, when you're, when you're scared, look for the helpers. Because there's always helpers. And, and he, he talked about how that helped him get through life, that, you know, when there were bad times or scary times, he would always look for the helpers. And we have those here in Conro ISD and we're so proud of them. And so, I'm going to invite Ms. Eldridge to come up and so that we can recognize her. And we're going to give Captain Blakelock an opportunity to say a few words about our officers as well.
President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, and everybody in attendance, Conro ISD is filled with people that do great things for other people every day, just to help. And most of those people will tell you that they do those things because it's part of their job. We know it's more than that. We get to see these acts of kindness and, and appreciate these people every single day. What we don't often get to do is recognize somebody for taking those actions or making that effort to make the ultimate difference in somebody's life. And I am honored to be able to recognize Officer Tremisha Wiley and Sergeant Michael Mann for their efforts. They will tell you that they were just doing their job. We know that it is a lot more than that. Officer Wiley, Sergeant Mann.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. We really appreciate it.
So glad you are here.
We're so glad to see you.
I'm glad to be here.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for everything you do.
I didn't know you were, you know, superhero when you gave me the badge, told me though. Thank you so much. God bless you.
I know.
I'll remember that. She checks, I'll answer you. Hey, good job, great job.
Are people in the back?
I got lazy.
What a nice story.
Yeah, should we have a break to allow people?
Should we like take a, a quick recess? That'd be appropriate.
Yeah, so, it's pretty emotional, pretty emotional for a lot of us. That was a wonderful story, just about people caring about individuals at the right time and just doing their thing. We really appreciate that. We would like to give a little five-minute recess, so those that, families that want to leave after they've gotten their wards is perfectly fine and we'll, we'll carry back up in about five minutes. All right.
That was aggressive.
Nice.
Been working out over there? I'm in charge here.
All right, very good. Our next item is item three, citizen participation. Ms. Godfrey, do we have anybody signed up today?
We do.
Awesome. Okay. Please keep in mind that while this meeting is held in public form, the purpose of this meeting is for the Board of Trustees to conduct a business of the district. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, the Board policy BED, if a patron during a public comment addresses an issue that is on tonight's posted agenda, the Board will defer its discussion to the issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any issue that is not on the Board's posted agenda, the Board cannot and will not deliberate or make a decision related to that issue. Speakers who have signed up to address the Board during the, during the public comments must make all comments to the Board of Trustees and not the audience. The Board has specific policies under which the Board considers complaints. If your purpose is to seek some type of remedy, the Board cannot discuss or respond to your concern until they have met the requirements of the appropriate district policy. Accordingly, the Board will not hear complaints or derogatory comments about individual students or staff during public comments. Information about how to file a complaint is located in the district's website. The Board expects that everyone in attendance will conduct themselves respectfully regardless of whether they agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Interrupting speakers or this meeting will not be tolerated. To ensure that the Board can efficiently conduct the district's business, each of the speakers who have registered to address the Board will be given three minutes to present their comments. Each speaker's time will be displayed on the screens around the room. When the, excuse me, when the countdown time reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Godfrey, will you please call our first person?
Abby Colburn.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abby Colburn and I am a senior at the Woodlands High School. I'm also the co-president of Trip 1053, which is our theater department at the high school. And can you hear me?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. And as a theater department, we put on four shows a year. We were the world premiere of the play that goes wrong, the high school edition, which is pretty cool. And we also do a lot of community outreach events, so me and my other co-president, we're kind of like the face of that. I'm also a Texas Thespians STO, which is what the fancy sash is for. And in November, we put on the Texas Thespien State Festival where me and 19 other students, we get together and we put on a convention for like the 8,000 theater kids that are in the state of Texas. And then after that, we advocate for theater in our schools, which is what I'm here to talk about today. Throughout my time as an STO, we partnered with the Texas Arts Cultural Trust, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And I came to realize how important theater education actually really is. For example, arts and culture generate $6.1 billion in taxable sales in Texas alone. Students that take theater classes in school are twice as likely to graduate high school and 22% more likely to attend college, just showing that you, like, not, you don't have to be like a theater kid, but just taking a singular theater class helps students get where they want to be and be able to do things like speaking in front of a bunch of scary adults. Theater kids are 15% more likely to get, people who take theater are 15% more likely to get the commended status on standardized tests, which is very cool. And they have a 32% lower risk of developing depression, which I feel like in our day and age is a very, very important thing. And 94% of students with a high level of arts engagement attended a four-year college. So, just taking a singular theater class can get someone where they want to be, even if it's not necessarily theater-related. So, I've brought a proclamation with me, which is what you all have in front of you, so that as a board, we can help bring awareness to theater education. The goal is to make March theater in our schools month, to kind of bring awareness to theater and everything. With your help and signing this proclamation, we can help bring more funding to theater departments across CISD and help prepare students for their bright future. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to talk. And if you have any questions, I think my email is on the thing that I sent when I signed up, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Diane Daniel.
Welcome.
Good evening. First, congratulations again, every one of these meetings we come to in the beginning. It is wonderful to see the positive reaction and encouragement and achievements that are from everyone's hard work. And I'd love to see that generated all the time and never say anything's contradicting, you know, upsetting. But I would like to review some things that I believe need to be brought to everyone's attention that happened this past year. The push for the mandated mask-wearing, even though the studies prove that the restricted airflow and lowers ability to think. Then partnering with Kelsey Sebo on the experimental jab. What bothers me now is that the influence that you had, and we had discussed this last time, in regards to, you have a lot of weight when you send out an email. Parents listen. And instead of saying, perhaps you should look to your physician, you partnered with Kelsey Sebo. Now, it has been proven that there are side effects to those who have gotten the experimental vaccine. And I would like to know if this is going to be put into any health issues coming forward when children are required to get a physical? Will they be asked if they have gotten the experimental jab because there might be additional tests that they need to have taken to see the effects of that jab might have had on their health? To foresee that nobody gets injured while participating in any athletics on Conro ISD The other area that concerned me was the, the fact that the sexual and pornographic books that were in Conro ISD libraries, has this been resolved? Have these books been taken out? Why were they approved and installed in the first place? And what is the Board doing to look to see that these books were taken out? I do see that the, the Board has made some very fantastic decisions this past year. Dyslexia, the programs that you've advanced with dyslexia and helping the students that truly need it. I was overwhelmed, that was wonderful. I'd like to see further programs concentrated on in those areas. Sticking to reading, writing, arithmetic is important. Sticking to reading, writing, arithmetic is important. But how you've enhanced the extracurricular activities has made a huge difference in the ability for our children to succeed. And for that, I thank you. This young woman speaking tonight, I think she was articulate. She obviously was educated here. So someone's doing something right. Plus, give her a lot of credit because she took the time to want to learn. You have to want to learn. Thank you.
Ms. Daniels.
Misty Odenweller.
Good evening. Thank you for having me up here again this week or this month. I wanted to address the issue. I had the concern. And last month, I asked you all if you would please, I asked Dr. Knoll and I asked the Board to please reach out to the teachers. Please talk to them. I, I encouraged you to try to get some feedback, especially from the teachers that were going to be notifying their principals that they wouldn't be reply, returning again next year because I'm aware, as I said last month, of a number of teachers that will not be returning this next year. And it's obvious when I searched through the CISD employment postings that we're seeing a struggle of filling positions. And I'm not saying that's CISD's fault. That's not what I'm saying. Or the Board's fault or Dr. Knoll's fault. There's obviously something going on in there that we're struggling to fill speech pathology positions, special needs teachers, or special ed teachers, just in general. And, and there's some reason for that. And there's some that were posted back in August. There was at least one posted in August and one in September that still hasn't been filled. So I just encourage you to reach out. My, my grandson, three years old, had to wait for three months to see a speech pathologist. Today was his day, so we're glad. And I'm thrilled with the, the service that was given to him. I'm not disappointed in that. To work with a three-year-old, to do a hearing test and a speech test can't be that easy. So that being said, I, I again encourage you, we need to keep the teachers and the specialists in our schools that we have. And we need to have a plan for what can we do to, to entice others to come to Conro ISD. When I graduated from Texas A&amp;M, woo, as an educational major, we were the premier district. We are a premier district. We are in the top ten, I think, in my research, of school districts in size. And given that, we can really set the bar and continue setting the bar for what we expect, what we can offer to teachers and encourage them to come to us, to entice them to come to us. I mean, what do we have, 68,000 students now? We have a sixty-five, sorry. Sixty-eight-five, okay, so I wasn't that far off. So I'm just asking you to please get with the, the teachers that are on campus. Just talk to them. It doesn't have to be formal. They don't need another meeting. They don't need to stay after school another day to do it. Try to find time that you can talk to them and, and just find out what their needs are and what, what's really wearing them down. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn Nene.
Good evening. Today, I will, I will be speaking about athletes and the adverse events post-COVID injections. Since February 2021 through March of 2022, 772 pro athletes have suffered cardiac arrest with 488 deaths following the COVID injection. Many of these events have happened while the athletes were playing their sports. I bring this to your attention as CISD has many athletes who have received the COVID injection. In the VAERS reporting system, we are finding many of our school-aged children have developed myocarditis. A pediatric physician in Virginia posted in his office the following message, and I quote, "Sports physicals are done primarily to make sure you are not at risk for sudden cardiac death on the playing field. COVID vaccines affect that risk. In response to the worldwide experiences and vaccine adverse events monitoring, we are adopting a more precautionary sports physical sign-off policy. If you have received doses of the COVID shot, you will not be, you will not be cleared until you complete, we will not be able to clear you to compete sports without performing lab work and possible echocardiogram to rule out potential heart damage." I applaud this physician for his research. Each of you have received a copy of the CISD annual physical exam form for review. Today, I am requesting CISD and the Sports Department to do an addendum to the physical exam form asking if a student has received the COVID injection. If yes, they will be required further diagnostic studies to rule out potential heart damage. I sincerely hope you will take my request seriously and make the recommended changes to keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Gulin.
Good evening, Dr. Knoll, President Hubert, Board members. I'd like to challenge you tonight. Let's imagine, imagine any one of our high schools marching bands. Visualize it. Take the time. What comes to mind? Is it the instruments, the sounds? I can bet it's the uniforms in some point of this. Now, I'm going to challenge you further. Imagine whoever is in charge of making sure that we have those uniforms says, "You know what? We don't have to spend the money on those uniforms. They got concert band uniforms. They can get out there in those." Can you imagine one of our high schools' marching bands competing at the state level with everybody else in traditional marching band uniforms? But having one of our high schools out there in concert band attire? I mean, don't get me wrong, beautiful dresses, tuxedos, they would look ridiculous, would they not? Can you imagine how embarrassed those kids who worked so hard would be? Thank God, Conro ISD would never, ever let that happen. But you did. Not with marching, not with marching band, but with mariachi. Conro mariachi, Conro High School mariachi competed at state last month. They were the only mariachi that I saw, the only mariachi that my daughter who competed saw, that were not in a traditional mariachi uniform. They were in their orchestra dress uniforms with bow ties and hair braids that, thank goodness, a parent did donate. They felt out of place. They felt intimidated, something that they worked so hard for to come to this moment and not have the uniforms for it, for it to be a detrimental thing to them when it should have been one of the best moments of their lives. How did this happen? We don't have the money? We're talking a budget in over half a billion dollars. I don't think it's a money problem. I think it's an equitable allocation program, program, problem. So, I challenge you that as you guys go through your steps in the budget process this year, that you guys ensure the equitable allocation for uniforms so that when Conro Tigers go to state again next year, they'll do it in the proper uniforms. Thank you.
Robert LaBelle.
Hello.
Howdy.
First, I'd like to say it was great what we started out here with, all the great things that some of these students had done. I really appreciate seeing wonderful things like that. And that, I applaud the whole system for turning them out. Now, what I came to here to talk to you about, a couple of months ago, three months ago, whatever, Mr. Toth came here to explain to you and us about some, a law that he had passed. And it was, it was great because it was about banning CRT. And y'all know what that is. I'm sure you've probably heard a hundred thousand things about it. But there needs to be things actually done about it. Actually, I'd like to applaud Mr. Toth for coming here and talking about it and explaining it. I understand some of you did not appreciate that and actually told him to mind his own business and get out of it. That's what, that's, I heard there were some letters. I did not see them. I just heard this was the basic content of it. And I find that rather, rather appalling. Because this criminal racist theology is satanic. It is, it needs to go away in any way possible. It is being bombarded across all the United States school districts from Washington District of Criminals. And we need to start fighting back. This is my backyard. This is where y'all live. We need to push back on this satanic crap, one way or another. Y'all are more into the politics and however you do that, but it needs to happen. I mean, we need to cut off the National School Board, cut off T, whoever's pushing that into our system. I know it's not a class. You don't go in there and you teach kiddies, "We're going to talk about CRT today." You don't do that. It is infused in the subjects, and that has been proven. It is there. It needs to go away. Thank you.
Sir, thank you.
That's it.
Very good. All right. Okay, moving on to item four, consent agenda. I have not heard from anybody to pull anything out.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, motion of second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Very good. Motion passes. Yes, sir. It's been suggested that we move up item 12 on the agenda, which is name Assistant Superintendent for High Schools. Any seen objections to that? Seeing none. Dr. Knoll, we move item 12 up, which is name Assistant Superintendent for High Schools.
Thank you, sir. Well, as we know, Mr. Colson has announced his retirement, and he has done a wonderful job of leading our high school program. But it's time for us to, to find the person that will fill his shoes. As we saw tonight, as evidenced because we, we were able to hear from three of them, one of the things that we take great pride in, in Conro ISD, is that our high school principals are amazing. We, we put a lot of responsibility in their hands. You know, they're all running, I would say, small cities, but some of those cities aren't small. They're, they're large cities. And they all do it in their own way, with their own special touch, but they are the face of their community in, in many ways. And so selecting a person to lead that group is important. This is the way they can help each, each of our feeder zones to reach its fullest potential. And we had wonderful candidates that were submitted and went through the process for this. And that makes for difficult choices for us in our positions. But we feel like that we have made a choice of a man who will, brings a great character, kind of a quiet, calm demeanor, but great expertise with over twenty years in Conro ISD, serving in multiple feeder zones in roles from teacher, assistant principal, associate principal, ninth grade principal, junior high principal, high school principal. And, and in every step along the way has built positive relationships. And, and I think in the mark of a true leader, he's helped everyone around him reach their fullest potential. So tonight, I'm very proud to make the recommendation to you for Dr. Chris Povich to be our next Assistant Superintendent for High Schools.
All right, do we have a motion?
So move.
In a second. Do we have any discussion? All right. Seeing none, I call the, call the vote. All those in favor show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
President Hubert, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll, thank you. Thank you for all your leadership, your guidance, and your support to our community and our students over the years. This is my 25th year in Conro ISD. It's hard to believe. It's my eighth position in this district. And each time, every position I've had, I've always said I'm the luckiest person over, who worked for Conro ISD. I have the best job. I would say even better now. I have family here. My kids go to schools here. We live in the community, taxpayer of the community. There's many things to be excited about. I don't take this lightly, the responsibility. I will do my very best to help our district and support all of our communities and push us to the next level. I would like to thank personally Dr. Knoll for all of his support over the years. And then another mentor who was my direct supervisor for thirteen and a half years in the high school, and then the last four years, my supervisor as well, Mr. Colson. Been a mentor for all those years, kept me in line and gave me a lot of good advice over the years. So, big shoes to fill. Big shoes to fill. I don't take that lightly. I know that. And I look forward to working and supporting y'all. Thank you again.
Good job, man. Congratulations, brother.
Congrats. You're good to do.
I so bad wanted to tell you congratulations there. I thought, I better not.
Dr. Povich, would you like to introduce your family to us?
Yeah, you got to do that, man. You got to.
Thank you.
All right.
And y'all are welcome to go celebrate. You'll get to spend plenty of time in these meetings in the future, Dr. Povich.
Congratulations, Dr. Povich. Very excited for you, and, and we are also excited for Mr. Colson and everything he was able to achieve as well. I will tell you that when the news got out there that Mr. Colson was retiring, and he's so humbled, he's not going to say anything about it. Those that know me and know my position, friends of mine, actually sent me pictures of Mr. Colson at the state championship for swimming, jumping in the pool with the team every time they won the state championship. So even back to your high school days at the Woodlands High School, you were loved, and so you'll be missed. So thanks for everything you've given as well.
Oh, we knew. Don't worry, him.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, picking up at item five, administration. Five A, conservative rule of campus mascot and school colors for Gordon Reed Elementary School. All right, Dr. Winkler.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the Board, and Dr. Knoll. Last month, we came to you with information regarding the school colors and the selection for the mascot for our newest elementary school, Gordon Reed Elementary, which will be opening in August. This is a beautiful campus. We had the opportunity to walk it last week, and it's coming along very well. So we're very excited to be in that building with our new principal, Ms. Sean Cresswell. The school colors, as you see here in these renderings, are navy blue, yellow, and gray. For the mascot selection, as we presented to you last month, we opened it up to our families to nominate a potential mascot. And from there, we narrowed it down to two selections, the Cubs and the Gators. And so over the past couple of weeks, the students have been able to vote on the Cubs or the Gators, and almost 200 students voted on their choice. And it came down to almost an even tie vote. So we solicited the feedback of Ms. Annette Gordon Reed herself, and, which was very exciting. And so we are proud to recommend the nomination for your vote tonight for the Gordon Reed Cubs.
Go Tigers.
Are there any questions we would ask that you vote for Gordon Reed Cubs?
I like it.
I like it.
Good job.
Move approval. Second. A motion and a second. Any discussions?
Anything other than Tiger.
It's very cute. It is very neat. I like it. It's very soft, so.
It is.
All right, all those in favor, show by the uplifted hand.
Or roar.
Any opposed by the same Any opposed by the same sign? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Sorry, Dr. Knoll.
I'm happy.
They want to win. They want to win. Don't do that.
Item six A, Teaching and Learning. Consider, item A, Consider Adoption of Instructional Material for Health and Physical Education. All right, Dr. Upshaw.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, I come to you with the consideration of adoption of our instructional materials for health and physical education. So the Instructional Materials Committee has completed its review process and it has come forward to you with, with a recommendation. I do want to just recognize for a moment the committee of teachers that came together and also the leaders that are your agenda item today. It's a lot of work that goes behind the scenes on a yearly basis to bring this forward to you. So just a reminder that this particular adoption is one that comes as a recommendation from the District Committee to the SHAC, which is our Student Health Advisory Committee. That recommendation comes to them and then it comes through the SHAC to you as a recommendation to be able to adopt. For our instructional materials this year, the only resource that was available met the State Board list, which is Goodheart Wilcox, which is listed. So with that said, another additional information I'll send to you and provide for you is that we do have public posting of this information for SHAC. And so we did have about 290 viewers that are partaking in that since February 2028 to give feedback and comment for us as we went through this process. So with that information being given to you, I'd like to recommend, on behalf of the SHAC, Goodheart, Goodheart Wilcox as our purchase for instructional materials for health and physical education for this year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Any questions? Everybody's good? All right, all those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Upshaw. Also, since we're on teaching and learning, real quick, I'd like to point out that last month, we had a lot of principals that had their Zoom meetings. And we had, I think everybody on this board was able to get on those Zoom meetings and encourage our teachers and talk to our teachers and thank them for what they were doing many times. And I just want to say I appreciate the support that you give and the encouragement that you give our teachers, especially during this rough time as well. Thank you for that.
If, if I could add one more bit of thanks to that. In addition to the, the Zoom meetings and our campus folks know this, but we, our, our board goes out and gives ambassador awards every year as well. And that requires them to take off of their paying jobs during the day to come be a part of that. But I know it means so much to our teachers. I think we are maybe a little more than halfway through. And certainly I appreciate the time that you've spent with us to go out and recognize teachers as well. So thank you. It means the world to them. So thank you.
Very good. Item seven, Planning and Construction. Item A, Received Capital Improvements Update. Mr. Foster.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to bring you an update on our capital improvements we have underway throughout the district. I want to start you with our safety and security project for 2022. So this is a project that upgrades cameras and access control systems and things that help make our, our campuses more secure for our students and faculty. This is representation of places we're working over the year of 2022. The project is currently on schedule and will be working through the end of the calendar year for this installment. And then in the beginning of next year, we'll bring you the 2023 installment and keep working throughout the district on this district-wide effort. Like I said, it is on schedule and we're happy with the progress that contractors making. I want to talk to you about our campus renovations project for 2022. Our major scope of work at Gladys Elementary, which is an air conditioning, basically an HVAC system overhaul of that campus. So we don't have any pictures for you yet because the, the work right now is procurement of equipment and materials to make sure we're ready. So when the students leave for the summer, that we can get in there in earnest and overhaul the air conditioning system on that campus and get it back for the students when they return in August of 2022. Currently, that process is on schedule and we're happy to, happy with the way that's going as well. At Creighton Elementary, this is our big overhaul project. We're anxiously waiting the summer here so we can continue the kitchen expansion. So we can better serve the population there through child nutrition. And then engage all the new utilities, the fire sprinkler system and all the other things that we've installed over the past year there at that campus. That project is currently on schedule. Like I said, we're waiting for summer so we can finish it by August when the student return. Now, at the new Morehead Junior High School, that project is proceeding very well and is on schedule. It is scheduled to open in August of 2023. As you can see here from our red picture, the building is taking shape and being more and more complete as each day passes. The contractor there is performing very well and we expect it to remain on schedule throughout the process. At Conroy High School, this is our major overhaul of the Conroy High School campus. You can see here, we're really excited because construction is going vertical. So on the left-hand side of the picture, you'll see the framing, structural framing for the CTE building that is being constructed around what is currently the, the band hall of that campus. On the center-right portion of the picture is the steel going up for the new athletic venues, the gyms that, that will take place at the current facilities that are on that building. It allows to start moving and do the, the department shuffle as we move department, department around and continue that process. And in the big dirt spot, kind of upper center of the picture, is the new JV field and practice fields that are currently under construction and underway. So that project is currently on schedule. We've got phased turnovers as we go through. Our first turnover should be mid-year of next school year. And then we'll continue on that campus through December of 2025. Now, our new jet center, I'm happy to report we achieved a substantial completion this week, I mean, so this month. So we're receiving furniture and getting that project polished up and ready for our student, and departmental use over the next several months and several years as we use that facility towards into its core. You can see from the inside, this is a kind of a look from the ballroom out to the field. So it's going to be a dynamic venue for our teaching and learning professionals as they get learned on teaching and learning. Now, Flex School number 21, that's Gordon Reed Elementary on the west side of the district in the Conroy High School feeder zone. As we now will have a mascot to dress up that previous slide. But here, the project is currently on schedule. On the inside, you can see the finishes and it coming together very well. Project is scheduled to open for students in August of 2022. At Oak Ridge High School, this is our major overhaul project, which will develop into our South County CTE facilities. And just like Conroy High School, now we can start to see the construction. It is vertical as well. So we're doing the, the framing in the kind of the center-right of the picture, which would be the new admin facility for that building as we make the, make our way around. You can start seeing the new driveways and new access points. And this summer, we're going to be engaged on the, the roadwork that takes us around the campus. The project is on schedule. We do have some phased turnovers at the end of the, the calendar year. But we will be finishing that project overall in August of 2023. Now, Conroy High School is our ninth grade classroom addition. So that project is on schedule. It'll be turned over for use for the students when they return from the summer break. The building itself is in really great shape, as you can see from the classroom picture here. The work now is dealing with the great transitions from one side of the building to the other on the outside with the retaining walls and sidewalks that help facilitate transportation, pedestrian traffic through, through the campus. That project is, like I said, on schedule and the students will be using it when they return from the summer break in August. Flex School number 22, this is our newest elementary school that we approved last month. It is in the Grand Oaks High School feeder zone. So since we've started that work on site, it is in clearing, preparation for the building pad. And as this time next year, it should look just like Gordon Reed. So we're pleased with the, the progress so far and that project is on schedule and is scheduled to open in August of 2023. We've also, last month, authorized the start of the new maintenance and child nutrition facility, which will be out on FM 2854. That project is demolition, being the word of the month. So the existing building that's on that site is being dismantled so that we can make room for the new building, new facilities we're putting on that property. That project is currently on schedule and will open for our use in the summer of 2023. We've also authorized and started on our Candy Creek High School upgrades project, which you heard about from Coach Heimlich this morning, or earlier in this meeting. And demolition, again, is the word of the day there. So we are expanding and making new, the, the athletic facilities for that campus that deal with the growing population of those students and those programs to help, help Candy Creek excel. So that project is on schedule. It will have also some phased turnovers and we'll complete that project in the summer of 2023 as well. And that's our update.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Appreciate it. Any questions, comments?
I had just one question. You know, that facility, the demolition, this is kind of a personal question. Is that, uh, some of those materials going to West Tab?
So is this the, the new maintenance facility?
Is that what that is?
Yeah, well, that's the, the property for the new maintenance facility. You're talking about the West Tavern, Aquabridge Church, which was on that property before.
Only out of courtesy to, you know, people in our community, I know there was some trying to get some. Were we trying to work with them? Maybe that's the better question?
Well, I mean, we're not working with them. So just to be, to be clear. But what, what they are doing, so what we've been able to facilitate is the, the church that formerly occupied that building has been able to work with the demolition contractor to purchase those materials as they're salvaged from the, from the project, property. So we get a better deal on the demolition price. They get a better deal because they're buying their building back from, from them directly.
And again, that was just more of a personal. I didn't want to get into it too much, just.
But, I mean.
I'm glad we're able to help people in our community. Or not we're helping, but we're.
We are working.
I got you.
Best facilitate the transfer in the most expeditious, yeah, big word possible.
Expedientiously, yeah. Thank you, sir.
You are welcome.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Appreciate it. Moving on to purchasing, item A, Consider Award of RFP 211015 Self-Funded Health Plan ASO Medical Product Services. Mr. Rice.
Yes, good evening, President Hubert, members of board and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, it is my honor to represent the Employee Benefits Committee in this very important recommendation to the board. The Employee Benefit Committee is made up of representatives from all district feeder zones, auxiliary departments and administration. And I would like to ask the members of the committee that are here this evening to stand and be recognized. The Employees Benefit Committee is recommending that the Board of Trustees award RFP 21-10-05 Self-Funded Health Plan ASO Medical Product Services to Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide the medical network and plan, and plan administration for the CSD self-funded health insurance program. Just to note, this RFP does not include pharmacy benefit management. Our current PBM is managed by Core Trust and utilizes the Optum Pharmacy Network and formulary. The request for proposal, the document was prepared by the CSD Purchasing Department and Gallagher, and they are the district's insurance consultant. Bid notifications were emailed to registered vendors through the district's electronic e-bidding system. The proposal was advertised twice in the Conroy Courier, on the CSD purchasing website and social media. Five vendors, United Healthcare, Aetna, Cigna, Blue Cross Blue Shield and Healthcare Highways submitted proposals. A seven-member subcommittee of the Employee Benefits Committee was created to perform initial evaluations of all bids received. This committee consisted of employees from Finance, Human Resources, the Employee Benefits Committee and Gallagher. Members of the subcommittee completed a health plan and TPA evaluation sheet for each bid proposal. Two finalists, Aetna and Blue Cross Blue Shield, were selected to make their best and final proposal to the full Employee Benefits Committee. Each vendor submitted their proposal, which included their plan design, expected cost, TPA capabilities and any possible disruption to employees' access to current doctors or hospital network. Upon completion of their finalist presentations, Blue Cross Blue Shield was recommended by unanimous vote by the Employee Benefits Committee. And a lot of the disruption concerns were answered with the current contract between Blue Cross Blue Shield and Memorial Hermann was finalized at the beginning of this month. Financial savings that will be realized are approximately $8.2 million annually as compared to the United Healthcare proposal renewal rates for playing year 2022, 2023. These estimate, estimated savings will be achieved through Blue Cross Blue Shield enhanced network efficiencies, accounts for about $7.7 million of those savings, and reduction of admin fees of about $521,000 annually. The term of this agreement is for two years, beginning September 1st, 2022, renewing annually for three additional one-year terms. And we feel that we should have similar benefit levels as we currently do and adjusted for any network changes as we're changing from United Healthcare to Blue Cross Blue Shield and, and as compared to our current levels this year. So we felt, felt very good about that. Maggie Parker with Gallagher is here this evening to answer any, any additional questions that y'all might have. I recommend your approval.
Move we approve as presented.
We have a, we have a motion. You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, any questions or comments?
Just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. You go ahead.
Utilization rate for the employees, what? That's a lot of money in savings. And I know they're generally going to be real close. Are any of those, I mean, that's all guaranteed, right? So.
Guaranteed savings.
Yeah.
The Blue Cross Blue Shield has, has put up money upfront to, for these savings. So they, they haven't guaranteed them, but they are putting money upfront that they will lose on admin fees.
That's a guarantee to me. That's good enough. Yeah, okay. I, I thought they had. That's what I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, they did.
And, and so the number of employees using the system, is that gone up in the last few years?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. I, I just, it, it seems like maybe that may be part of the better reason we're getting better pricing is because we have more participants in the program as well.
Yes.
Okay, out of curiosity, is this insurance plan, so we're, okay, so we're in a very competitive environment for teachers, administrators going into April 9th, when we have our, our job fair and in the hiring process? Will this plan be very optimal i- in the job market? Will, will teachers and administrators see this in a very positive light in compared to other districts? I mean, what are other districts offering?
You know, that, that is, that is a challenge and that's, that's a great question. But we feel we will be competitive with our plan, especially with the savings that we realize. You will see at the April Board Workshop, we will bring to you plan design and premium recommendations at that, at that workshop. And then at the April Board Work, uh, Meeting, we will ask the board to adopt the actual plan design and the premiums that are associated with it. But we do feel that we will be very competitive with our neighbors.
And then what was Plan B going to be if, for some reason, they hadn't come to terms with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Memorial Hermann? What was Plan B?
We had, we had a lot of conversations with Blue Cross Blue Shield. They were crossing the Ts and dotting the Is at the last minute. So they almost assured us that the contract was going to go through. They had also worked together with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Memorial Hermann, if you remember when Hurricane Harvey came. They were in the middle of contract negotiations at that time. To help the community, both of them said, you know, we're going to keep this contract going. We're going to cease negotiations. We're going to keep the contract going moving forward. So they worked very well together and, and we were very confident that they would, they would work this out, so.
Because this was a six-month negotiation. So we were looking at them knowing that the negotiation was already six months in. And then, of course, the media came out with the whole people were losing their plans and unable to get surgeries.
The plans that, that Blue Cross Blue Shield proposed to us, we have what is the Blue Premier Plan, the Blue Essentials, and then their high deductible plan, which is kind of a wide-open network. The plan that, that concentrates Memorial Hermann, the Blue Premier Plan, was not in question on their contract. They, that contract was solid. So that is where the majority of our members that are going to use Memorial Hermann would be. So we felt very confident that we had them in that plan and Memorial Hermann was still under contract in that plan. They, their contract was on their wide-open network, their larger, broader networks, not in that particular HMO setting that they had there. So we felt comfortable bringing that to you.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, we're with United right now, right? How long have we been with United?
This is our third year.
Third year. Before that.
We were with Aetna for over 20 years.
For over 20 years. Uh, so this is the third provider in just, what, five years?
Yes.
I, I have just a question. So the 8 million in savings, which is a lot. Um, are, are, are the people going to see lower cost for their monthly insurance or copays or?
The savings that, that I, I talked about, the 8.2 million dollars, the savings compared to rates, renewal rates for next year. We feel pretty confident in, that, that we'll have similar rates that we have this year, next year with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We'll see very little, if any, increase in our rates.
So United ups the price by 8 million and.
Over five years, it was almost $50 million.
Okay. And this analysis that was done for disruption, so how much, like, how much disruption are people going to have? That they have to pick new doctors? They have a different network?
I'll ask Maggie to, to talk specifically about the disruptions.
Yeah. I mean, don't want to be unduly burdensome, right?
I think y'all, this is Maggie Parker. She is with Gallagher, our insurance consultants.
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. I can pull them up if necessary. But it was under court of law, so I want to make sure I'm not breaching. uh, it was under cote de sang, so I want to make sure I'm not breaching anything. But, uh, the networks are very, very comparable. Um, there is very little disruption with Blue Cross. It was one of the strongest carriers that came through in terms of network utilization with the hospitals and the providers. So, there's always a possibility that one doctor or, you know, something like that is not going to be on the plan. That, that can happen at any time. It is an at-will contract state, so those contracts with providers can come up, but all of the main facilities are near identical matches. The Kelsey population, which is extremely important because you do have a Kelsey plan, is going to be an exact match. There's actually some enhancements in the networks for the individuals that will have that old Kelsey plan. There will actually be in some enhancements, and so the network disruption in general was, um, it wasn't measurable at all. It was very, very minor.
Okay. Thank you. And this will be a two-year contract with Blue Cross?
It is a two-year within, uh, option for three additional one-year contracts.
Three additional one-year contracts. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, one more, one more question. Um, of the other school districts that Gallagher is looking at, how many school districts are also switching over to Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Um, here in the Houston area, this will be our first, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield client. However, I will say that Blue Cross is extremely competitive in general. They are the TPA for TRS, which is across, um, the whole entire state, as well as all of the school districts in the Houston area that have TRS. Uh, many of the school districts have shied away only because of the HMO environment of the Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is something that your membership today experiences in your plan design inherently, so it's not a, an emotional burden for your, for your benefits team.
Good job.
I, for one, because I'm in this world as well on the health insurance stuff, and I commend the district for going out and pressing, because you just have to on these carriers, you know, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, United, Memorial, Aetna, Cigna. It's very difficult to find a doctor that's not going to take one of those, one of those plans out there. So, as the, as the industry insurance world goes, there's always somebody that's looking for your business, right? And so, I appreciate you guys going after and, and saying, look, if, if there's somebody out there that, that wants it and is a, and is a good match, you know, going after and making it, making it happen. So, I appreciate that. And I know that we will, at another meeting, talk about those premiums and how, what is the share between the, the employer and the employee at some point, so... And also, the deal with Memorial Herman, Blue Cross Blue Shield went through this with Methis two years ago, and it came through, and they went back and honored all those, all those claims as well, and they've gone ahead and done the same thing with Memorial Herman as well, so that, for me personally, is not a concern as well. So, I appreciate y'all going out, because this is something that we didn't do in the past, so I appreciate you wanting to go out and, and get partnership with Gallagher on, on looking out for, for the taxpayers' dol, dollar, and then also great benefits for our fantastic staff and employees.
All right. Anything else? All right. Seeing none, I call the vote. All those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, consider approval of Class Link Inc. for the purchase of Class Link Suite Launchpad and the rest of that.
Mr. Reeves.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we're requesting that the board approves the selection of Class Link Incorporated for an estimated annual expenditure not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Class Link Suite provides a single sign-on suite of products that contains the features and support requirements needed to replace the existing single sign-on, uh, that the district is currently using. The current SSO vendor was acquired by another company, and the product roadmap has removed several important features that are required in Conroe ISD, such as the reverse proxy, which grants home access to CSD systems, one-click connections to certain systems, patches, updates, and other features. Class Link has the features needed, including various types of two-factor authentication for security, analytics, modern user interface, file access, and user rostering. Funding will be provided from the general fund. Texas Education Code Section forty-four thirty-one A requires that contracts for the purchase of certain goods and services valued at fifty thousand or more in aggregate be made by the method that provides the best value for the district. After requesting quotes from multiple vendors through various purchasing cooperatives, procuring these services through the district's inter-local agreement with the Texas Department of Information Resource operative, who selected vendors through the competitive proposal, proposal process for information, technology, products, and related services, was determined to be the method of purchase that provided the best value for the district. At this time, the board is asked to approve the use of this vendor and authorize payment up, to the vendor of up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So may.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion, a second. Any discussion or questions?
I'm sorry, did they say it was one-sixty or two-sixty?
One-sixty.
One-sixty. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. All right. Uh, on to our finances. All right, Ms. Garza.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements as of February twenty-eighth. Our first statement this evening is the balance sheet. The balance sheet shows the district's assets, liabilities, and fund balance. Presented here is the general fund, the debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. Taking a closer look at our cash and investments in the general fund, we have two-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-five-million in the pools right now, um, flush with cash in the pools because tax collections are almost all here. We're a little over ninety-five percent of collections for the year. Our investments with Wood Forest, thirty-nine-point-three-million. Our short-term investments with US Bank at forty-four-point-eight-million, and our longer-term investments with TCG at just over fifty-three-million dollars. For total cash and investments in the general fund, a four-hundred-and-two-point-one-million dollars. This is our income statement. The income statement shows the district's revenues and expenditures. In the general fund, our total revenue year-to-date is four-hundred-and-seventy-eight-million, total expenses of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-point-two-million. In debt service, a hundred-and-eight-point-three-million in revenues, total expense of eighty-one-point-one-million. Our two thousand nineteen bond referendum update, year-to-date, we have expended our life-to-date of the bond, three-hundred-and-twenty-one-point-three-million dollars. Remaining is three-hundred-and-thirty-point-one-million. We have sold four-hundred-and-four, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight-point-five of our approved six-hundred-and-fifty-three-point-five-million-dollar bond referendum. Our self-funded insurance, we have seen a little bit of a reprieve the last couple of months with revenues exceeding expenditures for both the months of January and February. Year-to-date, we have total revenue of twenty-six-point-nine-million in the plan and expenditures of twenty-eight-point-six, so we are running a deficit year-to-date of just over one-point-seven-million. Our investments as of February twenty-eighth par value, eight-hundred-point, eight-hundred-point-seven-million dollars. The pools are yielding just thirteen basis points. Um, Wood Forest National Bank at thirty-nine basis points. Our short-term investments, sixty-four basis points, and our longer-term investments with TCG, seventy-six basis points for a combined portfolio of just over twenty-one basis points. We are trending just slightly behind the ninety-day T bill, although we should see that gap narrow as, um, the pools catch up to the...
I was going to say, that just jumped in the last thirty days, and then, you're right, the pools will, what is it, sixty days?
And I looked today, there are thirty-five basis points already today, so it'll take a little while to catch up, but that, that gap should close.
Reprice all that.
Thank you, Ms. Garza.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garza. Moving on to item ten. A closed session, closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice of this meeting, as authorized by Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one and Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any financial, final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed or executive meeting or session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote shall be at either, A, the public meeting upon the reconvening of the public meeting, or B, at a subsequent public meeting at the board upon notice thereof, as the board shall determine. The closed session of the board will now be held. The time is seven forty-five. Board is now in session. Time is eight fifty-two. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you all. Have a good night.